This conference will now be recorded.
So, I'm going to call to order the Monterey Select Board at 6:01 PM. Justin Makeup is present in Town Hall.
Frank Abbott's present in Town Hall.
And we're missing Susan today. But the first item of business is meeting with the Finance Committee to discuss the, to review the fiscal year '24 budget and zero-based budgeting going forward. And I think we're short Susan and we're short a new member of finance. It's going to need to be determined. But it's my understanding that we want to get started on the zero-based budgeting sooner than later as to what the expectations are and what we can, what we can reasonably expect from departments for data collection. So we need to set forth some guidelines and maybe see what's possible and reasonable.
So we had a discussion, I mean, Mark is president. We had a discussion and we think we have a pretty simple way of doing it if it's not unmeaningful. But there are two stages. One is, and we'll discuss this, we want to just go through the warrant piece by piece at some point, what has to happen, what didn't happen, you know, what's the cost, what needs to be changed so we have a good closing baseline, you know, so at some point. But for zero-based budgeting, we think it's just a process with the departments. We're going to create a very simple template that we'd like to explain to you. I can explain it to Melissa. We can look at it. And then we think we'd like to have like a morning session, you know, half day or something with breakfast, Frank, I, Jeff, and whoever, Player would be named later. We'll all be there. We all have experience in zero-based budgeting. And we'll just take each department through their items, right? Here is personnel. How many lines do you think you need? Melissa knows your salaries. This is what, you know, health insurance is. But how many lines do you want? And then we'll cost it out. And then we'll do the same for each item. That's really what it is. So we'll be able to help Jim. Where do you look up gas? Where do you look up this? How do you figure out a budget? So to work with them in just getting the feel for what it is. And then as they need help before the budget process, we're happy to walk them through it. Is that, talk about what we discussed?
So how would this differ from how, when invoices are submitted, they already are numbered for what account they're coming from?
So it's not invoices. It's looking at the, so gas is a really, you know, I was playing with gas last year. Because I think that's a really good example.
Well, the gas, we broke it down. We had different fuel vendors. And basically, I took all the invoices that Melissa provided, divided it among fuel, the fuel, gas, and diesel. And then I, you know, I knew they're on like a two week, I forget the, I think diesel's every two weeks, gas is something else. And then you could calculate what your fuel consumption was per week. And it was very consistent after you got it. And you could use that as a budgeting tool. You know, it's off the invoices after the spreadsheets was done. So you could calculate that. Yes, Melissa?
And you're done.
Okay. So, you know, that was it. One of the things that, you know, I thought about the zero, with the zero-based budgeting and some of the big ticket items, like, you know, we have, I think, $200,000 for replacing an F-550 next year. Well, what's it costing us to maintain an F-550 now? So saving those repair bills, buy vehicles would allow us to know what our vehicles are doing. Because vehicles are turning out to be a very huge cost of your, your expense budget or your capital budget, most expense.
Can I just add that before? So, but the key thing is when we looked at the, the fuel budget, they were like, I don't know, what's the price going to be? What's the price going to be? What, what number should we use for the price? So Frank's system mitigated that getting at the price and went after some actuals as well as some predictions based on the cost of fuel that made, and we'll see improvement in footing this year more realistic. And that's the idea. So budgeting is planning ahead, right? So we have some data from the invoices, but it's really looking at what we think we'll need. What you're talking about, the invoice is really accounting what happened after we made those choices and what was fair. It's more of a front-end process.
Well, it's a back end. It's a front-end, back-end process.
Yeah, it's a bookend process.
You know, I just want to comment, you know, we talked about, you know, we're asking people that have been doing things for the same way probably for years to do it differently. It's not a one-year thing. And we do have to be careful on how much we chew, you know? We're not going to be where we want to be at the year one, okay? People adjust differently to the input. We'll learn as we go and make adjustments. So it's not like, we're not giving them a whole pie or cake or pie and saying, okay, you got to finish or eat it today. You know, it's a process and we'll just have to roll up our sleeves and get in there and work through.
I love community centers sitting behind me and I feel so bad having my back to them. But I think a good example is the community center also, you know, like the fees. It's not going to change in one year. A zero-based budgeting process forces you to ask questions and have a discussion and then decide the course of action you want to take that's going to move forward in the most efficient way. So that's really what we're trying to do, have these conversations. Some of these things about a spreadsheet or this, that, maybe we'll need it, maybe we won't. It's still, okay, here's how many people, here's what it is, here's what we're costing out, and that's it. So some of it will be the same. Some of it will require some conversation. Is that fair?
Yeah, I don't want to.
Yeah, Melissa wants to.
Yeah, well, so I was just going to say, basically what you described is what we have to do. We came up with the same figure that you did based on the way that we do our budgeting. So I think, I'd like to meet with the Finance Committee before anything is put into place and maybe with the three big budgets here, highway, buyer, and police, to see what exactly it is you're looking for. Because I think we're already doing it. And I think what.
That's what I'm saying. Some of it will be the same.
I think when you guys keep pushing zero-based budgeting, you're scaring a lot of the department heads that you're going to be requiring a spreadsheet that says, you know, I want six pencils for next year or washers. Because that's how it's come across.
Well, I'm sorry. It's come across. Well, there's a couple of comments. You know, I don't want to be disrespectful, but some people just didn't do it. I mean, they told me they had it when you asked. You didn't get it. And the fuel budget went. And, you know, I gave a projection for them to do, but they chose not to use it. And that's their party.
Well, I think we had something already set in place. And so I think that's why a conversation would be good, you know, so to.
Working out there a lot of conversations.
The brothers that happened last year.
The way I've always done it as a layperson when it comes to budgeting, because I'm not an accountant, but I have worked with budgets, large and small. Some, one extremely large budget, is that typically what people do is they say, gee, this year we spent $100 and everything goes up, so next year we're going to spend $104. And they use a multiplier that's a percentage, whether it's 4%, 3%, 1%, 10%, whatever, and they do that. The other way to do it, the way I've always looked at zero-based budgeting is, is not only what do we expect to spend, but what's the income?
So we don't get.
Well, we have income to the town.
Well, anyway.
That's why I'd like to have a meeting. But we do do it that way. We don't do it where we just add them.
So, yes, I'm just going to, so the, the issue about pencils and washers and stuff like that, you don't, I don't believe that it's really useful for finance committees to go to that level of minutia. I think that what needs to happen is that the supervisor who's figuring it out says, gee, what of my anticipated expenses, what are they likely to be next year implied by what they were this past year or this current year? So what's going to happen to my anticipated expenses? And some of them may go up because X, Y, Z, but some of them may go down because of these other reasons. So we bought a new vehicle, which was a capital expense, I'm just making that up, but now we don't have to pay as much repairs for the old vehicle that we don't have anymore because we traded that one in. So then what you'd start to do is, well, okay, there's, what, what happens then in terms of the new number on that line item? And it's just being able to see the rationale for that so that we then do that across 200 and however many line items there are, across all the line items, and say, okay, we have a bottom-line budget here that makes sense and that meets our joint responsibility to the town to be, the fiduciary responsibility to be responsible and to have a budget that makes sense. And if, if something has to change, then we've, we've seen that by a thoughtful process. I'm not saying it hasn't been thoughtful, but by a thoughtful process that takes into account where did it, and you may be doing it already, which is great. And it just may be a semantic thing, which is even better because then it's not, it shouldn't be scary. It should, oh, that makes sense. That's what this is? I mean, how many times in my career have I heard this big, long, complicated thing? And I said, that's what you meant?
So I think.
So maybe.
I think a meeting with the three, myself and the three big, because we all understand what zero-based budgeting is. We are already doing it. I think it was some of the requests and how they were worded to us last year.
So maybe, and we can just, we can just work through that and say, oh, cheap ways. That's all it was. Okay, great.
I would even say a premium because we have some ideas about like, you know, changing the budget worksheet that I think would clarify some of this in, in a way that makes, it's just like a note section. So we should work with you first and come up with materials. And then, and then the other thing that we're all talking about though is the roll-up. And this is something that, you know, the Finance Committee is very cognizant of last year and we're going to be cognizant again when we do a project, when we do a plan, when we purchase a truck, where else could we push out in the budget? What are the other costs going to be? It's just not that line item. And I keep on going back to, you know, supplies. This one has excess supplies. This one's asking for more money from the expanded account. So a better way of, you know, kind of doing some kind of inventory. We come out and we have a plan. So that sounds like a plan.
Yeah, I think that let's, let's schedule some meetings with them.
So.
No, you first.
And me. No, I can't.
Yeah.
So at this point, the Finance Committee will take that on?
Yes, we'll prepare some materials, you know, and show what we're looking for with some examples and then share that with you. And then we'll have a conversation. And then if all goes well, we'd like to really, like she said, plan kind of working session with the three big departments so that we really do it all around the table together.
And, and I'm hopeful that it is what you're doing already. And if it's very easy, then people say, oh, okay. And this should not be a threatening process because we're on the same side here. It's all for the town.
Yeah, I think it was threatening. I think.
Or scary. It shouldn't, or upsetting.
It was upsetting, yes.
Sorry, I think it's the wrong word. But it should just be, it should just be, let's figure this out and what makes sense.
Okay, so the Finance Committee will take that on and come back to the Select Board?
Probably in August because Jeff's on the way in June and it will work on in July. So by August we'll have, you know, let's target, you know, a new opening day for some new stuff. Good?
Good. Anything else before we, before the Finance Committee?
Oh, just the process for going through the warrant, like what you, I don't know. We've certainly never been through it, like, you know, select, we need, I know it's a select war issue, but you need to use a fire department. But what else, you know, how do we know, do we get a corrected version? This is what was adopted? How do we like then start, you see?
Well, there's the certified town meeting minutes, which are online. If you don't have those, I can.
I can bring them.
Yeah, if you look up town meeting.
Well, we don't have a process where we go through debrief after all the meetings that we said, this is how we think it should work, what did work, what didn't, what we hope for next year to come.
I mean, we could. I think.
I think it's a good idea.
I think in the past year or two, that's kind of been how the budget process for the following year learned where we at and the accounts from last year.
I can give you an example. When we did it right after the parade, we didn't get anything, is my point, right? And then look at my ledger or whatever, look there are notes. Instead of waiting and saying, huh, I don't remember. That was six months ago. So I suggest we move that, you know?
While we just have a few minutes before we leave and you get up to the rest of your agenda.
A big agenda.
Because it looks like there's a big agenda today. The more, since they're going to be, understandably, Frank said was resigning, there's going to be two of us on the Finance Committee that are new to the Finance Committee. It would be helpful to me as one of those two to get, have as much runway as we can before things are due, as much lead time as we can, and as many routine reports, whatever they are, so that I can start to get up to speed in terms of learning about the finances and what, you know, when last year's closed out, what we're doing for this year, and that I can see it. So there's fewer questions. I don't know how often our accountant gets those to us or they come from, I don't know if they come from Melissa or the accountant gets them to us, but as much runway as we can have, especially also because some of us are still working and may not be able to like, you know, drop everything. And the more lead time to understand things, Melissa has responded to some questions I've had, you know, well, why, what is this? What is this? Because there's not yet a, an easy process for onboarding. And if we're going to have two-thirds of the time, it's going to be new.
I don't know what that is.
How's that doing, so?
Yeah, so a couple of things. One is that we get monthly reports. I mean, we get the payroll every other week and the vendor warrants every other week. So you would be welcome to review those. We also get monthly reports. And then at the end of this fiscal year, we'll get a year-end report, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we don't probably be.
It won't come for.
Right, that's not.
Weeks and months.
Right.
It won't come for weeks or months. But then.
What are the monthly reports of this?
There's the, there's the account reports.
Right, you should worry.
There's revenue and there's.
There is revenue and then there's. And there's the, there's the, there's the, and all the rest of the capital.
Typically around the 10th or the 15th.
And also just remember, you're not the only one new to this because I have not been a member of the Finance Committee post-warrant. I've only been a member from, when was there with post-warrant?
So.
So a lot of us go through.
Would you get those to us regularly, monthly?
So then the accountant sends those to you monthly, usually around the 10th or 15th, somewhere around there.
But then Jeff, the other thing is, there is a guide for Finance Committee members.
Seen it. I've seen it. Yeah, we, we gave him a copy.
160 pages.
Yeah, we gave him a copy.
And then there's the DLS alerts for information about financial.
Yeah, people stay for local.
Well, wherever I get through the website, through the .gov account, I'm on that.
He signed up.
So, and I plan while you're away to meet with Melissa and just to get a whole calendar, like a cycle process, and then try to calendar some of those.
Because we may have to have our meetings more frequently at certain times of the year, less frequently at other times of the year.
Well, and just like we didn't, I didn't know that it's a transfer process now. So, right. So we'll try to get some things on the calendar because we're learning it too for the first time and then be able to have like a cycle of when.
So I can tell you for the next and through, we want to do this every month.
So.
Through July 5th. Plan to have a meeting once a week through July 5th because that's when, that's our deadline.
Well, I don't even have one other member.
Well, you have.
Well, you got me to live there and do.
I can get my friend.
Because that.
Because I got to sign off on it, so.
All right, all the departments.
So we'll keep Tuesdays at.
Set Tuesday. You have a busy time for that.
Okay, any, the last two months of the fiscal year is when internal transfers can be done. And because of the way it fell this year, the 5th is kind of, it's kind of pushing us up a little bit because they only have until July 15th to do them.
One of the things we were talking about at our meeting also was putting some of this in writing. So when new people join the Finance Committee, there's, besides the book that the state gives, there's something specific to mount to write. This is how we do the work at Finance Committee. So you're coming onto the committee, you either know what a transfer warrant is because the most of that is.
I think, I think part of the problem is it completely changes as Finance Committee members come and go. And we've seen a lot of turnover in the past few years in the Finance Committee and Select Board and everywhere. So that, it's somewhat up to the Finance Committee what exactly it wants to do. It has responsibilities that are laid out by the state.
Of course.
And state law, but all those will be in the Finance Committee Guide.
Right.
And then there's things that are specific to smaller towns or to Monterey. But for the most part, I mean, the internal transfers and reserve fund requests, those are all statewide laws that we follow. So.
Of course, yeah. It's just a question of like an onboarding process for Finance Committee members.
Yeah, just, oh, you're right in the finance.
Yeah, I mean, we have three new ones.
I'm in hot virus before.
Right, so I'm going to start documenting the discussions, especially my friends, friends here, what we did. You know, we already came up with a few categories in our meeting, you know, reports, state reports, you know, cycles. That's, I think, the key thing. We want more of a calendar that we stick to as the briefing process. So I'll, I'll write up like a schedule. I got nothing else.
All right. Are there anything else before Finance Committee adjourns?
No, welcome Frank Abbott. Welcome Jeff.
Everything.
Thank you.
Welcome to the community. All right.
They didn't look at it?
Thank you.
You got in the community center okay?
What?
You got in okay?
We didn't go in.
We didn't go in.
We had an outdoor meeting.
We had our press.
Do you?
Good, my girl.
Okay, so the next agenda item is the community center variance permit. So Lori, if you are able to present on what you're looking for in the Select Board and explain, or if someone else wants to do that.
I'll start out. I'm Laura Shaw. I'm the chair of the Monterey Community Center Committee. Just to begin with, as you know, we were awarded ARPA funds for the construction of the pavilion. We ran into a lot of difficulties with that, one of which was the need for a bathroom. We, I believe that the last time we met with this group, we said that we were going to apply for a variance from the State Plumbing Board to, to not have to get the bathroom, at least immediately. The variance process itself has been very complicated. And what we have found out is that we need a five-year plan to really show what our intentions are. What we would like to do is to ask the state to grant us a variance for three to five years to have the pavilion built, to use porta-potties in the meantime, and to have the bathroom constructed as part of the building no longer than five years from now, hopefully within three years. The bathroom is non-negotiable, we have found out. We do need to have a bathroom. We're just kind of hoping to have a better timeline for it because we have the ARPA funds which need to be spent. Mary met with a number of people as part of this process. We do have the support of the building inspector, the plumbing inspector, and the Board of Health, all of whom will be writing letters for us to support this, this project. What we do need is something from the Select Board that says they are also in support of this project. The pavilion needs to be built. The increased use of the community center is just amazing. And so that, that is really going to be part of, of how we, we grow the use of the community center. As, I'm, I'm a little sorry that the Finance Committee left because we wanted to give you the heads up that there will be a capital expense for the next fiscal year, for fiscal year '25. Because this is just something that has to be done and there's no getting around it because of this local requirements and the state requirements. So, so we are so blessed that Mark Andrews, who is an architect, is part of our committee and has drawn up plans that can show you exactly what we need to have done. And these would be, these plans would also be presented to the State Plumbing Inspector so that whoever that is can, can see that we, we are very serious about this, that we definitely have the intention to build this bathroom, but not just immediately. And that, that's why we're asking to use the porta-potties until we can get that done. So maybe, Mark, you could show them your plan?
So just briefly, what we, what we worked out. But the, you know, we're being required to add a bathroom because of the increased occupancy from putting a pavilion, which we want, this is the community center building. And we want to put the pavilion in basically where the tent is now. It would have a, a accessible walkway that curves around and comes down to it. And the simplest and least expensive way to add a bathroom is to use this corner right here, which there's a Bilco stair there. But talked to a number of people and basically learned that it very rarely has been used. There's really no need. We have a good-sized interior stair going to the basement, so we don't really need that Bilco stair. Plus all the plumbing, you know, the existing bathroom is right here. The plumbing is, you know, we have the plumbing right here for the existing bathroom. So the new bathroom can basically just go right in this corner. It doesn't need to be accessible. I had email conversation with the plumbing inspector about that. And he said, since this is accessible, the other one doesn't need to. And so it's, it's fairly straightforward, but it's, it's an added expense. And so we want to apply for this variance, which gives us the way of being able to go forward with the pavilion before we necessarily build that.
Got some questions, Jessica.
Yeah.
So wouldn't it be premature to put up the pavilion before you know if the town would support paying for a bathroom? Wouldn't you go for the bathroom, wouldn't you ask the town if they're going to support, support paying for a bathroom first before you put up the pavilion? That's one question. I wanted to know, I've got two more just to be able to answer them all. The, is it a new walkway you said that goes over to the pavilion, that little porch thing?
Right, yeah. It would be a walkway.
Did anyone talk to Jim about if that interferes with the lighting plan that we're getting from National Grid? And then the third part would be, is, I know parking was also an issue. So where is the expanded parking?
So the extended parking is actually addressed on this also based on, based on some changes.
I think that's going to interfere with where the poles and the lights go, if you're talking about those, or it's like, you're talking about these, yeah. So I, I'm just, I'm curious of, I'm suggesting everybody meet with myself and Jim just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Thanks, Melissa. But I have been asking Jim periodically for updates.
Okay, so did he look at this to see if this interfered?
Jim didn't look at this yet. I, in the last month, I twice asked him to, if he can talk with me about lighting and another little project that just has to do with plants, but about the land. So Jim and I and you, whoever else wants to, needs to walk around the community center and look at what's going on, things being put.
I, I didn't get any of those communications. So I'm just laughing.
Right, yeah.
This is the first I'm seeing.
So at this point, thank you for doing the design work. Yeah, I think we would need to discuss, you know, the long-term plan and come up with some kind of agreed-upon long-term plan because the Select Board can't go ahead and say that this is the plan without any funding.
But one thing we could do is have them apply for the variance to see if they get it. And then they can come back and tone up us, which, I, I, you know, there's a question of what is the capital cost? But you have the drawings now. You probably get close to what the cost could be because you have a draw, you know, you know the specifics. This is just allows you to stay in the process. It doesn't mean, it's like with the park and recreation, they did the playground. They went through all the due diligence and then when they felt they got close, they came and said, here's what we need to spend. What I would anticipate if we gave them their page of the variance, that they came back to us, what are the costs? And then you can decide how we proceed.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense because it can't hurt.
It doesn't, I don't, minimal amount of money to do the variance.
Yeah, and the variance doesn't commit you to hang.
But it keeps you in the process.
Close the door, right.
Keeps you in the process, you know, what is the capital cost? You know, I did look at the drawings the other day and there are details enough that someone in the construction field, and Melissa brings up a good point, now you get Jim to sit down with you and have him look at it and do it. But you can have two things going on at one time. You're applying for the variance and you're understanding what the real cost is. Because there's, you know, there's parking issues and there's the walkway issue.
Right, and I know somebody was saying that the lighting plan was not even really considered a final, final plan.
No, it isn't. We're just waiting for, we're waiting for the final documents from National Grid and their goal, which.
Oh, this National Grid is coming up with their own plan, kind of based on that.
Based on their meetings with, with Jim and the current layout of the property.
Well, were they aware that there was additional parking being added? I know there was a sketch way back when, which this, you know, basically is what came from, so.
I would have to say no because I don't know that there was ever any plans to put in the additional parking because there's no money for the additional parking.
Yeah, how much does it cost to apply for the plumbing variance at the seat?
$86.
What is it?
$86. We can handle that.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, if you go forward and. Yeah, I mean, I think if, if you go forward and, and see what the response is to the, to the plumbing variance based on, you know, these drawings, these designs, then if we get it, we can start to make, start to talk long-term about a three to five-year plan. If we don't, then that's a different story, but, and if we end up not, let's say you get the plumbing variance, but we don't find the funds, or we go to town meeting and the funds aren't approved, then we're in the hole eighty-six dollars, but we have the variance. It probably is better to go, to move forward with the variance and then, and then go from there. And also talk to Jim.
Yeah, give a meeting.
Show, yeah, have a meeting with Jim and show him this and get input from him and on the design. Yeah, I mean, what do you, what do you need from us as far as the plumbing variance?
We just need a, a letter from you saying that you support this pro, this, the application for the variance.
Okay. Just that the, the town Monterey Select Board supports the community, community centers.
Application for a variance.
Application for a variance.
Right, and then there was also the question of who actually signs for the variance, who's, who's making application?
Yeah, the town versus, the town versus the, the community center committee.
Right, right.
I talked to Steve McAllister today, and he said, because he does a lot of these to the AAB, and thinks the plumbing board is similar. He said that I can tell them as the firm is the town of Monterey, and then the contact he thought could just be me as the community center since I'm, you know, work with him. But if you, Melissa, if you or Justin believe it should be Melissa or should be the select board, I'm fine with either.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with being the community center committee. The only thing I'll say, to just to reiterate, is that, you know, I would endorse seeking a plumbing variance, but this does not, this is not committing to, to that plan.
To the project, right.
And not committing to the project in any way. It's just to seek the variance and go from there.
Right, and the only reason I brought up the capital expense is that I know you like to have information ahead of time, and so we're just giving you a heads up that that may be part of the process. It's certainly well in advance of anything that you need, but just in terms of considering the budget, that may be something that we would be asking for.
Yeah.
Melissa, do we have any idea about the lighting process?
Yeah, I checked in with them today. Apparently there was something wrong with the first phone, and she's looking at getting us another one.
Okay.
So in addition to the letter, the, the variance application, that was just discussed, that would be under your signature?
It would be signed by the select board rather than someone like Lori Shaw.
Well, we just need one signature. If you wanted to call this up just to show the select board.
If someone can just give me the address and stuff, I would get a, a letter from the office, and Justin can help them sign it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I would, you know, so Frank, it's heard in motion. I think we can move that the select board supports the, or I will, I move that the select board supports the community center seeking a plumbing variance with the state and that I will sign any letter of support or the, the permit application as, as is necessary to show the select board's support.
I second the motion.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, we'll vote.
I'll vote yes.
And yes, so that's two affirmative votes, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
So then, yeah, once we get, I mean, I think there's a couple things. So in addition to seeking the plumbing variance, we should, as, in the meanwhile, cost out what porta potties would be. That's probably very simple, but then also if we can continue to get cost estimates to the best of our ability on the bathroom, walkway, and the pavilion design, and also speak to Jim to coordinate everything that's going on at that property.
Yeah, Jim, Steve McAllister gave me the names of a couple of commercial contractors who do, do this kind of work that could look at the plans and give preliminary, you know, ballpark pricing, basically, not, not bids, but, but, you know, ballpark pricing of what it'll cost, so.
Are those stamped plans?
No, and they don't need to be for, for preliminary pricing, so. We're just trying to get, you know, clearer clarity on what's the cost of building this bathroom. We have a pretty good idea on all the other pieces, but. Yeah, I still have to prepare specs, right.
Yeah, I want to appreciate Mark Andrews for doing these designs for us, pro bono.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Good work.
And you know, okay, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. My next item on the agenda is the BRTA's event, the annual event. Yeah, I would move to approve the BRTA's permit for an event for June 23rd to June 25th. It is an early American weekend.
I second the motion. I need to discuss that.
We'll vote yes. The motion carries with two yes votes. Are you here for any item in particular?
Yes.
Okay. Should we get to it?
That is.
It's your call.
Yeah, we, yeah. Is it an item already listed or question?
No, it's not. I did not.
Okay. We, I think we'll move quickly through what we have, so we'll be with you in 20 minutes over there. The BRTA Advisor Board appointment, so Frank, this is an interesting.
He's not kidding when he says this.
So usually you actually do a.
I thought he was being serious.
I do not second that one.
So actually, yeah, Susan, I did it last year for whatever reason. It is kind of, the towns are allocated votes based on how many, basically how much you use the system. So I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Monterey's at one vote. Other towns and cities will get more votes. So our votes somewhat irrelevant. And it's hard to devote a lot of time to it when really the ridership from Monterey is not strong, but.
Which I'm like what Lynn was talking about last week or something.
No, I believe that this is entirely separate. I think BRTA is all essentially buses, and it's holding Great Barrington in between. Are you willing to turn?
Melissa, I can't agree.
Okay, I would move to appoint Frank Canada as the first regional transit.
If my vote goes, we don't have a number.
First regional transit advisory board. And we'll call a, a vote on that motion. I'll vote yes.
I'll vote yes.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
So how about more information? Don't show us past my.
Yeah, so I'm gonna give this, and we'll start getting on watching.
Yeah, and then there's, I don't think they're, they're quarterly meetings or monthly. It seem to be kind of intermittent, and they send you information in a packet ahead of time. And they check to make sure that they're gonna have quorum because actually, and they may have gone back to in-person meetings, but for the two years I was on, it was almost always.
Is it Great Barrington or?
No, I think it was North.
North?
Yeah.
My picture?
Yeah.
I think I go off, I play golf in Monterey.
Do we need stuff?
Yeah.
So encumbrance, so I asked Melissa, and thank you for getting that to me, and I got the end of the year paperwork. The only, the only questions that I had are, could the, the select board, I want to talk to Eric Pincher and Or Donna about encumbering funds where there is no purchase order.
What is your purchase order?
There is no invoice.
You don't have an invoice, don't you?
I believe you do, because we have to show that the money has been, is going to be spent.
But the, the, the thing where I got hung up, and I'm not saying it's wrong because it is complicated, but it's the, it's special articles. Because if the town votes five hundred dollars for a new table, and we don't get to buying that table this year.
Special articles are different.
Special articles are in the back of the financials, and they're listed on individuals for once you voted on in town.
Right, those just get carried forward and we can spend them.
But that's my question is, why?
Because they're not specifically for one year. The operating budget is specifically for fiscal year 20.
Or if you go back in the financials, you'll see the different warrants that you voted on. Some of them will be less than the original amount, but they may have spent some of it.
Yeah, I mean, but you do have a choice whether to release it, because I looked, the, when you sent out the forms for the encumbrances, there was the form for the special articles. And I think all that I would like to see is that the select board review special articles that are being carried over.
Well, you could take the last of your financials, and we could print out that page.
I'll, I'll just fill out that one, show you later.
Yeah, that's all, and then we could just sign off on it. But I do, I do want to get, I do want more clarification, and I, I think what you're saying makes sense, that it's different because it's not just for that year, like the operating budget, but we do have to still encumber it in a sense.
That's what they carry forward. It's just two different terms.
Yes, but I, what I want to figure out is can we carry forward any special, special article no matter what?
Yes. As long as it's a special article.
Yeah, I just don't know why that is, and I'd like more clarity. That's all. Yes, from Eric, I guess, right? Please thank him. And then if we could review the special articles that are being carried forward, just, I think it's worthwhile that the select board knows what projects are being worked on and what is being carried over. And also, yeah, if it's years, it just raises a, I think it deserves some attention. Yeah, well, I just know like the, the schoolhouse money, right, it's three hundred four thousand dollars, but it gets carried over year after year for the electricity. Yeah, so anyways, that's all I'm requesting, is that the select board review the special articles before they're carried forward.
Makes sense.
And then Eric, yeah, Eric, can please explain why that, why, why for line items do we need proof that it's already been ordered or purchased, or that a service has already been requested, but it hasn't been received yet? But for special articles, if he could just explain that in his terms, please, thank you. It seems like we don't have any internal transfers for today. The cybersecurity incident response plan.
So this will be an ever-evolving one, so you can just approve it. It's one of the things we need to, to create.
I, I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
It's, and it's basically a template.
Yeah, I, I can see that, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Do we need to approve it?
Yeah, I would move to approve the cyber incident response plan at the town of Monterey.
I second the motion.
Any discussion on that? Call vote. Uh, vote yes?
Yes.
And it's approved. The open space recreation plan contract with BRPC is, we've discussed a couple times. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, okay.
I would move to approve the amended agreement between the town of Monterey and BRPC regarding the open spaces, open space recreation.
I second the motion.
Any discussion on that? Call vote yes?
Yes.
Yeah, motion carries. Just one, two. Masswork letter of support.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep. I would move to approve the Masswork. Should we wait till, no, we can't wait because the application's due. Okay, I would move to, to, you know, sign the Masswork's letter of support for pulver replacement on Sanis Field Road in Monterey.
I second the motion.
Any discussion on that? I vote yes.
I'll vote yes.
Oh. We will skip, at some moment, move right to comments and questions from the public.
All right. We have a heartbeat issue at the pavilion. We're running some cars, and we live at my new box of road. So we wrote a little letter about our concerns, and we have some photos that we could just miss asking again. I should write it concisely, but it's, it's a big problem. And we didn't know it was a big problem, and we've been there, but.
Yeah, and so I will take accountability for the past, for this past weekend, Memorial Day. Usually when we have town meeting, I do have the police barricade the road with cones, and, and I don't, hopefully you didn't have any problems at town meeting.
Um, no, 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 as I said in the letter, it's not so much, it wasn't really memorial parade thing was, was just like that.
Yeah.
Three days of parking issues.
Yeah.
And it was like boom, 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 but it's a, it's a town thing that we support.
Yeah.
You know, we're not, if that was the occurrence, that's fine, but this is a really.
Yeah, so.
And that's our concern, and it's getting to be a problem.
Yeah, and, and we can definitely.
We did not call the police. I just want to make that clear.
No, but I mean, but I mean.
But he drove down, he did the same thing that everybody does.
Yeah.
He was out, he said, stop, can I talk to you for a minute?
Yeah.
So he said, come, talk to you guys.
And he, he didn't realize it's going on so much on that.
It's been quite an issue that it's just really disruptive, and there's, there's obviously, and I think you guys know that there's not enough parking there.
Yeah.
For all the increased, you know, events there.
Well, I think too, it, it's, we can make it work when we're cognizant of it. So at town meeting, I've been, it's been an, an ongoing issue, as you know, but at town meeting, every time that there's an annual or special town meeting there, I talk to the police chief, and the police chief is aware, and he blocked.
He does, he does.
So Memorial Day, that was my fault. I didn't.
But that's not really, that's not really what.
But I understand it's more than that.
Yeah, this is, this is like, uh, the K8 meetings, when the Lakeview Association was, was up there on that, but a conflict with them, there, there, there's a guy parked, tried to turn around the driveway, parked up on the lawn. And I told him, asked him, she said, can you please move and not turn around the dirt? And then he started har, har, arguing, it was big, it was big time, and then, because they're, they're signed, we get swore at. I said, for people, people just, just ask, I said, can you please not park on the lawn, and then they, they flipped out.
It just makes a really confrontational.
On that, and that's been, been going on since, since we moved.
That's just this weekend, we didn't plan, you know, but.
But at the same time, we're wondering, because I, I is, since, every time, they're filling all the fire department spots all the way down to there. So if there's a fire, where are the firemen gonna park? Because they. Because they have every spot taken up all the way, both sides of the road, all the way down through on that.
Do we have any, do we have one sign there that says private?
Well, the funny thing is, and the guy that was arguing with us made this point, he says, well, it says I can't park, there's no parking signs on the opposite side of the street. So I'm parking over here. So, and then you got the signs now for the lawn, don't park on the lawn. So everybody is.
And then there's, then they start parking, they're raping the blacktop. And I said, now you're blocking the, the road for people coming here and now. They said, well, they can drive off the road.
He said, fire truck.
I said, you can't do that.
So let's start, let's start, I mean Frank, and, and let's talk to, to Jim too, so we won't make anything fun tonight.
This is one of those you guys did this.
At the very least, I think we need probably a sign on both sides that says, this road is a private road beyond this point.
I think we're technically not.
You're not a private road.
We're right, our driveway is a private road.
Yeah, stops right at the, right, right at our driveway. So, but otherwise they have to back up about 100 some feet into the turnaround if they can turn, turn around. Because they got that parking area.
I haven't seen the best drivers, I can tell you that.
Because my, my, my truck in the, even in the park there, I said, I've seen cars almost hit it all. So I was like, okay, one of these times I'm gonna backhand hit, drive your driveway and I said, I won't know who it is. I said, who's in responsibility for that?
It's, it's just.
As you said, it's almost like you're making them turn around our driveway because the town property is like, we're right there at the end of my driveway.
Yeah.
It's like a dead end at the end of our driveway and people read Scott signs and, you know, don't go any further, but most of them, but still. And they go drive and they'll make a U-turn on our lawn. That's, that's on the private road. And they'll come back out and they'll, you know, it's just been a nightmare.
Yeah, well, thank you for bringing it to us and we will, we will talk to, to, talk to the director of operations and, and the police chief and see what we can do.
Maybe, I don't know, we just start when they sign that say no parking and no U-turns or this is a dead end or something to stop the people before they pass that last, oh, that tunnel pole. You know, beyond that, I don't know if you can see that pole picture, but it's not so much an issue that they say.
Yeah, this.
Yeah, you know.
Four right here.
Yeah, these guys are on our lawn, but like I said, Memorial Day, I'm not gonna argue about a great thing, but that's not over.
Well, but I should have, you know, I dropped the ball on that, but, but if it's every week.
The pavilion, that's where our land is.
Or, or if they have birthday parties at the, at the, last fall if we have, and then we're out there, can you move your car? Don't turn around the driveway.
It was one huge party.
And that's what, it, it's always a little private, that, 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 I think more is a problem. And, but, on that, and the chief, chief, like the chief said, he didn't know anything about any, any, any of the private stuff going on and that's all separate. But he said, and he did like the elections and stuff like that, he said, I'm always up here. And I said, I, I know that, you, you always, you even asked, I said, oh, can I put this sign here or, or that, anywhere you want. On that, but it's just like, I think it's all private stuff that the, the fire department has, people could go on and use, and use the pavilion for it.
We just wanna, you know, get the subject, you know, talk the conversation going and see what we can do.
Because I remember one time there were, people were saying they were talking about putting the parking on it, it'd bring next to the pavilion back and then that town piece of property on that for, for forum. On that, to, to, to just clean the road up, get traffic off the road. But I don't know, that's, that hasn't happened maybe at one time.
Well, we also have long in the works of paving a Fox Hill Road, so that might, I haven't seen the design, but that might affect the parking situation depending how, why the pavement is.
It's not gonna be up to them.
Oh, why, I don't know. I don't know. But you know, when we look at, you just look at the pavilion, if you look at the sign where that storage unit is parked, you know, where the firehouse is going to sit. There's only about maybe eight spots there and they park so radically that you're lucky to get eight people in. And then you've got like the two blacktop vendors in the front, so people are parking there now because the signs say don't park on the lawn, but you can park on my lawn. And then, but then they go down to the firehouse and if, there were 35 cars, 30 cars, 35 roughly.
30 cars on it.
For the AA meeting, that's a lot of cars.
That's a lot of them.
There's only like eight to 10 technical spaces there.
But then.
And then the birthday party was 40 plus. That's a lot of cars. And there's no assigned parking for it. There's no, it's just a at when kind of thing. And I think that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it to our attention. And we will get to work on it. I think the very least that we can start with is better signage to that. We can at least, whether it's, you know, that, you know, and then go from there if that works or if we need to do something more.
Police can know about the events, you know, how do they get the events? They know about the parade and other stuff.
Right.
But you know, when you start parking in people's yards and stuff like that or.
Well, and AA, AA is every week.
Every Sunday morning at nine o'clock, it's like the tacos dessert. And they're, they're all, they're all pulling in. If, once that little tiny storage unit space fills, they can't make a U either. So anybody that's later, you know, they come up, swing around our driveway and park along the edge and sometimes it's on our lawn at the end.
So, yeah, it's almost like we need to reserve, you can't park here, this is a turnaround, a, a small section for just a turnaround.
Right.
And I don't, I think the town doesn't, well, we'll have to, we'll have to look at.
I don't know what the distance the town owns at, but I mean, there is existing lawn there and.
Yeah, our property line really ends just about where this pole is.
Right across from the pavilion, the end of the pavilion, that's where our property line is.
But, but down there is, is, is not bad down, down where this is, but what they end up parking up where we just moved and, and the guy, the guy had Moe Moe on it, he said, well, they're, they're driving over the lawn, we said, it's rough or more. I said, right now, it's, it's not, not bad because I'm driving on the lawn because I'm.
As you kind of, we're, we're reading it up.
Hopefully within the next month or so, I'm gonna be re, receiving the whole entire lawn. So I'm trying to stop them, okay, stop it ahead of time before we get to lawnmower, because they said they'll be driving all over. They're really making a mess out of it then. Because everybody likes to drive on new lawns for some reason.
All right, well, thank you for, thank you for bringing, and hopefully we can, hopefully we can work something out.
We can get some sort of progress towards a better system.
Yeah. We'll look into what we can do.
Okay.
Please, yeah.
That, that's gotta be the parking.
Yeah. So they own.
So this is all wooded. Because after that line, isn't this wooded? Where, where is their driveway?
Their driveway is right here, but they own everything and we'd have, we'd have to figure out exactly what the town.
So what if we just put some curving up there?
I mean, this is actually, well, we just, I think we're just gonna have to, to look into, because you see, it looks, according to this, the road is over here, so actually these spots are probably owned by the town. But when it's right on that lawn, that's not right. So.
Maybe put the little curves like that, people bump into those, they're gonna blow tires.
Yeah, well, I, but I, and I don't know if they want those on their lawn. So that's kind of the difficult, but at the very least, I think there's one, I think there's one sign up here there that says private road.
Maybe the pavilion with the pavilion has that nice share and maybe they need to change that into parking area.
Yeah, it's where it actually.
I gotta go down and look at it.
Their driveway right where.
And sometimes that's just sloppy, but maybe that's.
Yeah, just gonna have to put gravel down.
And the beach monitor can.
AA group is a little different than, than a beach group.
So.
And maybe when the fire company gives permission to rent, they need to, you know, set down the ground rules.
Well, that's true, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, and we need to figure out even where, what's going on with all the boundaries up there. I don't know if those parts.
If you just bought the house, probably find where it's properly.
Yeah.
That Dottie's house that they own? No, the one on the other side, on the other side. That's why, I, I first put Dottie's and I put down maybe it was the across the street. That's just curious question.
Okay, well, well, I think really we're gonna rely probably on Jim on this and.
But Brian is aware of it, but I'm not talking to Jim as well.
And it all, and it, it did get brought to my attention a couple of years ago that it was a concern, so for town meeting, I've always, and they've always been good about it, it hasn't been a problem. But the, the, the thing that they brought up is even if the parade had been private events, that the.
Yeah, October Sunday morning.
Yeah, that just, it's a little wearing. You know, if it's something like, I said, Memorial Day, that's something special, town meeting, that's okay. But if it's, if we get to week.
30, 40, 30 cars is a lot of cars.
Okay, do we have any unanticipated business?
I do.
Yeah.
Um, if you guys can just sign the, this is the final report and reimbursement request for the.
Loader?
Loader, yeah, so you can sign and.
You got the loader, didn't you?
Yeah.
It's blue.
Yes, this is, yes.
I saw him driving down 23 that morning for other day.
I think it's on the reset here, duly authorized municipal officials. So Lori, this is just a, a chapter 90 reimbursement request.
Final report.
And final report for $79,545.70 for the tractor loader, which we've already approved on at least one occasion to actually. We're not doing minutes tonight, we'll do those. Do you need those sent, the draft minute sent to you from this computer? Lori?
No, so I'll be stopping by on Thursday and I can just send them again.
Okay, all right, just wanted to see if you.
Thank you.
Other than that, are we ready to go?
The only thing, I was just going through stuff today. We were talking about stuff for this year.
Yeah.
We have a contract.
Yeah.
But I just, I'm not, I don't have an opinion, we just didn't put it on the list.
Okay.
The way is all.
Motion adjourned.
I second the motion to adjourn.
I'll vote yes.
I vote yes.
And the meeting is adjourned at 7:04 PM.
What happened to the theater group?
What about it?
Well, wasn't Big Bowl House wanting some theater thing?